We need the moisture. Yeah, this is fine.
Test one, two.
It's only good, Troy. If that's if you care about what I think.
Absolutely, Lee. I was just making sure we were on.
Where is she gone?
Well. Oh, I'll be fun. Good experience. Remember my first, my first trip through here. Well, maybe a little bit smaller. Yeah, yeah, it's better. Yeah. Better fertilize that a little bit.
Yeah.
Are you?
I think I look like G I Joe.
Are you working out? Not very in for a day or two?
No, they want it.
Yeah, I'm sure. They said, how many else? I think someone went upstairs. If you could give it to me and send them on.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, we never publish that part of it. So I really think. And anybody that I saw, I hope you come here. But yeah, I'll have somebody down there to do it. Just a couple. Oh, yeah, we'll go through all the other stuff first. So over time.
Oh, it must be nine.
Oh, it's mine.
Good morning, everyone. It is nine a.m. It is Tuesday, July 26, 2022. I'm going to call this meeting the Cottington County Board of Commissioners to order. We'll start with a pledge of allegiance and I think is my turn. I'll start us off today.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll move on then. Actually, I'm going to make a note that Lee Gable is zooming in this morning. If you have a cell phone, if you could silence it, if you need to take a call, if you could step out in the hall, and we are also streaming live on YouTube. Item number two, call for public comment. Public comments will still be accepted via phone calls. They are on items that are not on the agenda. The two phone numbers are six oh five eight eight two six two four eight and six oh five eight eight two six two nine seven, and we will address those during the open part of our meeting. Item number three, conflict interest items. Are there any for fellow commissioners?
No.
No.
Item number four, action to approve the July 26, 2022 agenda.
So moved.
Motion by Van Duzen. Did I hear a second by Gable?
Yeah.
Yeah, he did. Second.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
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 That motion carries. Item number five, action to approve the July 19, 2022 minutes of the Cottington County Board of Commissioners.
So moved.
Motion by Johnson.
Second.
Second by Van Duzen. Any additions or corrections? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries also. All right, item number six, it is tax deed property auction at nine a.m. I think Carol ran downstairs to see if there was any possible individuals waiting at the front steps. Then I believe Cindy, you have Troy lined up to.
Troy has a note to read when we start the sale.
Okay. See if I can find it here.
Is Carol going to come and give us?
Yeah.
Property on the screen?
It's right about right.
That's the correct property.
Yep. Go right before that one, Troy.
Yeah.
Nope.
Weird.
I don't see it here.
There you go. Um, should we get her a few minutes? See if Carol comes up or she going to let us know?
I can read that.
Okay.
All right. Tax deed sale. All delinquent taxes, penalties, and interest are abated and are not the responsibility of the new owner of deed. All special assessments, except for delinquent municipal special assessments, under South Dakota codified law ten dash twenty five dash twelve are abated from the property. Only municipal special assessments, delinquent, current, and future stay with the property and are the responsibility of the new owner. As per South Dakota codified law ten dash twenty five dash twelve, the property is also subject to any claim that the state may have in the property for taxes, liens, and encumbrances. It is presumed that existing federal liens remain against the property. Any information, questions, negotiations on these liens need to be directed to the appropriate form of government, not the county. The issuance of a tax deed pursuant to South Dakota codified law ten dash twenty five dash twelve appears to release all other liens of record against the property, not the person. Examples of these are county liens, mechanic liens, special assessments of all non-municipal governments, judgments, and mortgages. Cottington County makes no guarantee of absolute fee, simple marketable title to the property. It is recommended by the marketable title standards that the purchaser of a county quitclaim deed pursue a quiet title action in order to acquire marketable title to the property. South Dakota codified law chapters forty three dash thirty, twenty one dash forty one, title standards twenty six oh one and twenty six oh two. In addition to your bid price, you will also need to submit a deed recording fee of thirty dollars. Payment must be remitted to the Cottington County Treasurer's Office by three o'clock today. That payment can be in the form of cash, cashier's check, or official bank check or credit card. The bids will be reviewed by the Cottington County Board of Commissioners at their August 2, 2022 meeting. If the bids are accepted and approved by the board, the chairman will issue a quitclaim deed in the new owner's name, recorded at the Register of Deeds office, and the original will be mailed to the new property owners after that recording.
So I'm assuming there was no one down there? Okay.
Well, the first piece that we will auction off is located in the city of Watertown. It is the south sixteen point seven five feet of lot nine and Olive Lot Ten, Block Forty, Watertown Lot Company. And the opening bid has been set at twelve thousand dollars. Troy can take it from there.
Okay, opening bid twelve thousand. How, what are the increments we want to take these in? Does it matter? Okay. Twelve thousand, we have an opening bid, twelve thousand? Twelve thousand, okay. Twelve thousand five hundred? Jeff.
Okay.
Riley. Twelve five? Twelve? Twelve four? All right. Let's just do twelve thousand. Anybody else want to bid on that property? Twelve thousand going once, going twice, sold twelve thousand dollars to Jeff Riley.
You want to stop over at Treasurer's Office? She has paid her work for you.
Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you. Back on the tax roll, yeah.
All right.
Is there another?
Next piece.
I forgot about that. This is the piece that was taken a couple of years ago. Um, and we got, we've never gotten bid on it. The price values a hundred and forty dollars. This is located in Elmira Township. They do have a picture of.
Where?
This, yep, there it is. That little square there.
Cindy, is your microphone on?
Yeah, it is. Yep. I know they pointed at me, but.
It's not very big, but you might be able to fish.
Maybe. I'd fish or maybe a duck. A hundred and forty dollars is the opening bid if you want to.
Okay. All right, we'll start this property. One hundred and forty dollars. Steve, are you bidding on that? No, okay.
I think.
Hundred. You probably spray it anyways.
Hundred, hundred and forty dollars for this section of land. Get it back on the tax roll, somebody. Hundred and forty dollars. Anybody? All right.
So if there are no bids, we have the right to sell it by sealed bid for the next year.
All right.
Okay, that's what we'll do. Nobody interested in that? Hundred and forty bucks? No?
Will there be a notice sent out then of such?
One wants going twice, not, no sale.
Anybody interested too?
Okay. Sounds good. All right, then. We will move on then to monthly reports. We'll start with the facilities manager, Steve.
The new property owner.
He's probably familiar with it. Been spraying it.
Like you spray mosquitoes there.
Okay, we'll start out with my report. Um, at the Ag Building, the AC units are completed. There's been lots of 4H events that are taking place this and next month. I had assisted with the youth farm safety on PTO and green safety this past Thursday, July 12. Um, at the government building, this building here. To make note, I will send an email out, but fire extinguisher training is set for August 10 at the Cottington County Extension Complex. We'll be using the kitchen. Watertown Fire Department will be conducting this with, they have a simulator now. So if anybody can attend, it'd be great. This would be compliance for our insurance.
Cindy, who, who is all required to attend something like that as far as department heads or just?
It should. As many employees as possible. There's no, no specific employees, but it would be good for somebody in each office to know how to operate it.
Yep.
Or on each floor or something, but.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, everyone is allowed.
For ten o'clock in the morning and one o'clock in the afternoon.
Very good. Thanks.
Um, I don't know if you've noticed, but the flag on top of the courthouse roof here has not been flying for a while. Well, it's due to the brick is breaking loose free. The pole, the pole was leaning. My understanding, I guess, a few years back, must have been quite a few years back, it must have broke free before. From one of my staff members said that Al had conducted getting that fixed and so we had, but we brought a masonry up there and he actually advised not to fasten it to the brick anymore. So I don't know what we'll do. One of the things that pole is pretty heavy. If we do replace, I had thought about maybe putting a telescoping one up there so we can lower it down if we get high winds. So that would be an alternative. Um, detention center tile has been removed and grinding and new epoxy has been completed in the couple of sections of the detention center. They've been having several issues with AC units in this warmer weather. In fact, one of the personnel in here and so we had sweating his cheeks off in his room. It's been pretty, pretty warm in his room. And then, of course, you approved the cell door last week for the, in the jail.
What's it gonna take to fix that air conditioner? Yeah, or is it?
They've been working on it constantly. What is gonna take? Hopefully, what's in the budget? Which will.
For next year.
For next year.
Yeah.
All right, park, um, the flooring in the west shower house and restrooms on the west side of the park has been completed. Andrew, Sherry, Cindy, and I met with State Emergency Management and FEMA on the storm damage from back in May to access to get some financial assistance on that. Plus, put an insurance claim in for that event. Sounds like we're going to get redeemed some cost on the debris cleanup, plus probably even replanting trees. And then also phones have been down since Saturday morning. The last email I just got this morning saying they're working on the issue, supposedly there's a power line something, power supply source, I guess, out there that's not functioning. So until that is fixed, before we get the phones working out there. Bookings for since, since the February so far is a hundred and twenty thousand, seven hundred and seventy four dollars and eight cents for bookings since the first of February. Point of sale, two thousand, two hundred and seventy nine dollars with a total of a hundred and twenty three thousand, fifty three dollars and eight cents. Currently, right now, there's been probably about eight to 10 groups that have booked for next year. In fact, Fourth of July is, has been filled or three quarters filled so far because of the bookings, but they have, my managers out there said it has been a fiasco for booking spots and, and fighting over. We've been in this spot for a long time and they lost spots, so it's been kind of a nightmare for them. Um, in the weed department, spraying has been completed a couple of years, or a couple of weeks ago, excuse me. We're doing some spot spraying, some bad spots. Also, they are spraying some small trees that are in the county right of ways. And then also, my phone is down out at the weed shed also. We have, I've had a few weed complaints so far. I'm kind of handled right now, waiting for them to get in compliance with that. Jug recycling, dug recycling had taken place last week, Tuesday, at the weed shed. Okay, so far, hours of spray logged hours, there's been three hundred and two hours logged. Two thousand, seven mile, seven and a half miles sprayed. Two hundred gallons of two four D used and a hundred and thirty five and a half gallons of Tordon. Um, West Nile, um, we'd fogged a couple of communities just prior to the fourth. But now lately, our mosquito numbers and the traps are starting to set off with the Culex extending past ten per evening in a couple of communities. We have done some fogging in a couple of communities so far. Plus also, the indicate that there has been a positive pool now indicated in one of the communities in Cottington County. It will probably be coming out and report this coming week because it was from last week's collection. But so far, there's been no human cases as of today in South Dakota. Any questions?
Yeah, my chair, if I could ask a couple.
Sure.
Yeah, thanks for the report, Steve. You, you cover a lot of stuff and every you hear your report, you cover a lot of stuff. Just on the heaters and chillers in the jail, any, we, I know we were talking some about the bidding process. Or do we need, whether or not we need to do bidding? So have you heard anything from legislative audit or I know, I know you tried to talk.
No, I, he's more or less said it's kind of an avenue to, for Sourcewell, different for him. But I do know that there's other counties that do use Sourcewell, so I mean, it's going to probably be up to you as a body in order to make that decision and stuff for Sourcewell.
Okay. And then on the, on the phones at the campground, does that affect the online registration ability? I mean, the internet?
No, that is actually, that's internet through the internet, but it does affect for people calling in wanting to make reservations and stuff, so.
Is that a, an internal issue we're having or is that?
No, it's always been, it's not been internal. It's always been out at the box somewhere. Every time we've had a rainstorm event, phones have been down. I don't know if it's setting in water, what's going on, but it's been every time we have a storm event. I've been dealing with it every time in the last two years. So sometimes it's, it might be a day or so. The longest it's been is with a week, couple of years ago. Currently, right now, of course, we're talking Tuesday since Saturday, so.
So if somebody needs to get a hold of the park, what number should they call right now?
Well, the only thing that if anybody is, if they do know, it's been the wall's personal cell phone, but.
We're not going to give that to the media.
No. So.
Okay.
So can they, can they contact by email or?
They can contact me email. There has been a few. Currently, right now, it has been kind of slowing up with the, with you're getting towards to the end of the year and a lot of bookings, you might have a couple of people that might end up, you know, wanting to make a reservation here or there, but quite a bit of the park has been kind of pretty filled up and so they had.
Can they call your office here at the courthouse?
They could call my office at the courthouse. Currently, right now, I have not had nothing received there, so.
What's that number, Steve?
Eight eight two six two five five.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Not hearing any, I guess you ready to do your budget?
Not really.
Start with egg building first? Or no, no, no.
We're gonna.
Government building.
Um, do I want to hit in it? Well, we just will go and tackle the big one first. It's gonna probably do it in a little different order for a second there, but because this one's gonna.
You do what you want.
Be a subject. All right. For the government buildings, on the end of the, on the budget, on the, up in the top sections, and so we had, I did a salary increase. I did an eight percent COLA and primarily I did that because of what was done on the survey back that she had more or less stated that it should be kept up with the CPI index. And so we had, currently, right now, if we stay where we're going, we're probably going to fall behind. Of course, I did insurance at a higher rate also, just like everybody else, because insurance, it's gone up for the for our health insurance. And so we had, so it, it looks like it's reduced, but that's because I have one less employee. And so we had to deal with, so, but still, yet, it's still yet an increase. I put ten percent. I know that other departments put fifteen, but. So with that said, actually, it's just a slight increase from, for this year's budget, but basically due because of, of one staff of my part time that are, is no longer here. I'm going into, um, section or four twenty one, I do have that reduced primarily because this building become an historical deal. The insurance on this thing had gone way down. I don't know if Cindy can explain why, but, but it has gone drastically down.
Has to be on a separate policy since it's a historical building.
So that, yeah, so that's why that is down. So yeah, now we're going to get into professional services. I did budget for engineering for the projects that need to occur for next year. Plus also, I have management IT services, which comes to be four hundred and fifty five thousand dollars on the professional service end of thing. I did also turn around for building, for rentals, increase that a little bit because of, of potential with the increase of, of the building across the for the auditorium.
Okay.
On that budget item. It hadn't been put in there really for this past year. I didn't realize that until, till I, till that was in there, so that line item would be short on that.
Got you.
From this year.
Yeah, I don't see that increasing, so.
Um, repairs and maintenance, of course, that is up too because of, we'll still be debt battling yet till we have possibly, potentially having some of the air exchangers and the, and the AC units. Still need to be functioning and stuff till, till we, if it gets approved to get some AC units. I know it's kind of backwards. I should be explaining that first, but I had to put that in there and going down the line. Um, just a slight increase of building supplies just due to basically increase of fuel and, and other supplies has gone up since. Go down to utilities and so we had, it's pretty well been the same. Haven't really seen that much increase, been staying well underneath that. So I kept that the same. I had a slight increase with the utility, though, at the nurses, because that has been kind of exceeding the limit. Last year, we went past what was budgeted for this coming year, so it kind of rolls out a little bit. All right, building improvements. Building improvements. I have four million, three hundred and fifty six dollars and five hundred and fifty four million, three hundred and fifty six hundred thousand, five hundred and fifty six dollars. Um, primarily that is due because for improvements of here at the jail and probably and also here in the courthouse and is going to turn around and improve the lower level eight air exchange handling units and ventilations, which was, which was, we got a quote from Johnson and Johnson, and that was four hundred and seventy thousand. Original building air handling and ventilation, one million, three hundred and sixty five dollars or sixty five hundred and sixty five. Excuse me, tongue tied here, one million, three hundred and sixty five and six hundred and fifty dollars of. Of for the original building and air handling ventilation. Replace the three thirteen ton chiller and air exchanger, or, or with a thirteen ton. To a hundred ton chiller. Two, oh, that's wrong. Replace the thirteen ton that's on the extension or on the jail there. And then the hundred ton one that is outside west of the courthouse with the fifteen ton chiller, two water pumps and piping. Um, that is estimated one million, three hundred and sixty six dollars. Replace boiler, um, what will be is replace the two that's at in the detention center, which. Heats this building primarily, and the one that's in the courthouse is a backup when the temperature gets low enough. Down to twenty degrees, so that kicks in to help extend some of the heat. So they will be replaced with two boilers, which is about eighty percent more efficient than the three that we have now. And that is at one million ninety three hundred and thousand two hundred or two hundred and sixty dollars. And then also a negative pressure cells upgrades in the detention center, which will. Improve for in case of sick, so they can combine certain areas of the, of the jail, which is. Seventy nine thousand, seven hundred and eighty dollars.
I have a question on that. Is that throughout the whole jail or just a, a few cells is what you're gonna do? Okay.
Just like positive pressure unit, it just blows out the air circulation.
Yep.
Okay.
That's, uh, and a lot, a lot of the newer jails we were touring, we were thinking about building a jail that was, uh, you'd have like a cell block that could do that typically. And that just a lot, it keeps the, it basically keeps the, uh, isolates the, any kind of, I guess, microbes and germs and stuff to that, that cell block.
And because the roof on the sheriff's office is over thirty years old. Which we'll need to take, when we take off the thirteen ton chiller, we'll need to have that re-roof that is, um, estimated at seventy thousand. And then I also have been requested for carpet in some of the courthouse here, um, which. The treasurer's office was requested, plus the courtroom up in the second floor is pretty well, well, um. Uh, worn, um, these are a couple of things that if we have to extend, we can extend, but. That was estimated at twenty seven thousand, five hundred dollars. And then also there's been a request for courtroom sound system up in the second floor. Um, that has been pretty kind of outdated. Um, there's been issues of, of squealing and, and. And stuff and the sound has not been very good. I've heard that from several. Um, currently right now, I put that at seventy five thousand, but we did get another quote, which is lower, so. So we'll see, of course, probably not compared to apples to apples compared to what we had, got an estimate for.
So when you're talking about that, if you can email me that, I just got back from.
I will, I'll email all you guys this report.
Right. There may be a new infrastructure bill coming out. I talked to Will O'Brien while I was at the NACO conference. They said to be ready with a grant writer. There's going to be some money that is going to be pushed out. I don't know what. Infrastructure will qualify, but we'll try, I'm gonna watch that, so if we can get some grants, definitely.
Plus also now on here for thirty four, I have a hundred and seventy five thousand dollars for a hundred and fifty kilowatt generator. To supply the courthouse. Did look into and ask and so we had about for, um. Taking the one out of the jail side and increasing that one, but they said that would be astronomical cost. Because you'd have to wire everything from over there over to this, that the expense would just be, it'd be way cheaper just to add its own generator. Here.
Where would you, yes. Just push on that one. Where would you place that generator?
It would have to probably be on the east side of the courthouse over here by the, by the chillers in that area there. And that is closest to the.
That's all electricals over.
Yeah, most electricals over there. With that being said, total government, um, so we had five million, two hundred and seventy thousand. Six hundred and ninety six dollars.
You're right, it's pretty good junk.
It's a big chunk.
Steve, what do you have for that machinery and equipment of a hundred and seventy five?
That was the generator.
Okay, sorry.
But the five million and two seventy, that includes everything.
That's everything. That's the whole budget.
Yeah.
Yep.
The four million, three fifty six is just the new improvement.
Yeah.
You know, make the highway department look good here pretty soon.
Touche.
All right, which one?
Just a quick question on the salary. So Steve, you said eight percent. Can somebody refresh my memory? What were we saying?
Well, part of it is, is because, let me get my, she had turned around and him that or in her survey report. Basically had said it is prudent to increase the schedule by the CPI. Dash U or the estimated economic indicator is not wise to consistently increase the schedule. By less than established indicator, because over time, the salary schedule will fall behind in the external, um. And behind the external market and the schedule becomes obsolete, reporting more financial resources. To put it back in line with the external market. So that was what she had in her report.
Who is that?
Um, the doctor, the, we had our survey.
Victoria?
Yes.
Okay.
Just, just so people understand that with the salary issue and the, and we're balancing, you know, but law with the budget. So basically we can increase the budget by three percent or CPI, whichever is lower. And, you know, plus value increase of vibration, so, um, that's, that's something we have at the balance as we think about all this, just so the, you know, employees and the public understand.
Okay, yep.
CPI has been set at three.
CPI is three percent for twenty twenty three taxes.
Let's slot simpler.
All right, which one do you want to go through next, Steve?
Well, we'll just, we'll just follow in the. In the number order.
West Nile?
Would be West Nile. Okay, West Nile. I did have an increase this year overall on this one. Primarily, I added some, uh, um, basically, nothing's really been taken out for when we're doing the West Nile treatments and everything. So I added some into the salary in, increase, and so we had to be able to pull out of that. And so we had, so that's where I had probably the biggest increase, otherwise all the other expenses are pretty relatively. Um, pretty close to same, so that, which was almost just short of two thousand dollar increase.
Did you figure eight percent on that as well?
Um, yes, I did. I figured that basically an eight percent, but I figured it, it, it's nothing's been ever pulled out of the salary from there. But I figured, I, I went through about the average hours, what's spent, um, for the West Nile program. And I just turned around, took the basics, took what the employee staff are getting paid and did an eight percent, you know, that's where I.
Okay. I have park, but.
All right, that one again is an eight percent increase and so we had, um, I did turn around and raise the managers. Of course, it's about the same, but, um, it's been a couple of years, so. We'll see what we can negotiate with them.
When's that contract?
Um, it'll be due by the end of the year.
Okay.
Usually we try to get that done before they usually take off over the winter, so we'll try to get that done before the end of the year. Necessary, so. Um. Which gave an increase actually quite a bit, because I, I, I realized I just turned around and did an increase of what overall right now, what the staff is. Of course, every year changes because of staff, but because of that increase, I did, um. I did turn around and have an increase about fifteen thousand on that. Um, going down. So that, the budget for the park insurance of that has been increasing quite a bit, so I ended up turning around and did an increase. Of course, fifteen percent on that. Um. Did add, um, more on some rental, because, uh, we do rent some, uh, porta potties out there. The bad, especially in one of the areas and then when it comes closer towards, um, the car show. Um, it's more needed then, so that was an increase there.
So am I reading this right, that there was nothing expended in twenty twenty one or twenty twenty two for park rentals?
No.
So we didn't rent.
No, did not rent a porta potty, but they had been in the past, so.
That was during.
Back, yeah, in, in fact, last year, there's a possibility, I probably ended up turning around and coded it wrong. Probably quoted underneath supplies instead of underneath the rental, because I did get porta potties there last year. Part of that is remembering all the codes when I. Um. Repairs and maintenance, um, had been down considerably. Part of it is, is we, it was budgeted last, last few years was budgeted for. Um, the chip ceiling, and of course, that was twenty some thousand dollars, so that has been taken out of it. So now it's just been basically regular, um, um, routine maintenance and so they are. And my supplies, of course, my supplies keep going. There seems like we're going more through more supplies, more paper, more paper products. More garbage and, and so I had cleaning supplies have been, there's been going through a lot more. I, I'm fact, probably the biggest thing is, is, is the field. Um, I've already exceeded already my feel for this year already out there. There's a lot of mowing that gets done, a lot of field gets used up. Um, going down the line, so we had pretty well kept everything pretty close to same, just a slight increase on, on travel. Primarily just because of, uh, going to the South Dakota Park and Rec Association Conference. And then I have an increase of outlay buildings and one of the things, it's, we had, one of the biggest ones is Capesca Hall. The walls there are, the studs in the joist or the bottom floor, um, is rotting. Um, that is one of the buildings that kind of sets in water a lot of times when things flood, it's in the lowest spot. Um, so now we have the four joists is, or the, uh, should say the stud walls, and so we had the bottom foot or so is rotting. Um, we've had a threshold that's been kind of rotten on the doors and so that, need to do, um, some big improvements on that. Plus also I have in here for remodel of Girl Scout cabin. Um, there is a potential possibility, they were gonna get things done here by the first of August, that. The Girl Scouts might be looking at turning that over to the county. Um, haven't had a definite say yet, but they would like to have gotten it finalized here early this fall, so. We'll wait to find out, see where that's going. Then, of course, I had earned around for a nine hole golf course. Of course, when I end up turning around and had this, I had figured for baskets. Now that the gift from the city kind of will help relieve some of that, but this will actually help probably more or less put cement pads. For, for kiosks, so that, and help cover those costs of those pads. Then I also down in the machinery, um, category, I have for replacing new mower. It seems like every other year we need to have a new mower, because when you run the mowers and get about a hundred hours on them a month, it. It don't take long to start adding up after exchanging three mowers, trying to keep that in a, in a routine. Routine thing, so, um, which comes to be two hundred and seven, sixty seven thousand. Um, seven, seven, two sixty seven, seven hundred and thirty thousand. Um, on that budget item, which was an increase about, um, thirty five hundred bucks. Now we can go to the A, so. Course again, um, eight percent cola, um, this actually, so we had, it has a slight increase. Because I've had taken one of the employees that was coming out of that budget this year or last year, and so we had, that's, that's going in, it's into the weed. Um, departments, we had, that's, we're in the wintertime out there. Um. Going down, of course, that ends up be a total of a hundred and fifty thousand, three hundred and sixty five dollars. Because of the increase of the health insurance and the, and the slight increase of the, of the salaries. Insurance, um, had to raise that, we're pushing the limit of this, well, it's been expended already for this year. Um, and if we have an increase again, I did an increase again of, to increase that level up to get it to twenty five thousand with. And so we had, insurance is not cheap. Um, maintenance and repair had a slight increase, five thousand dollar increase in that, but did reduce the supplies. Because their supply category really over in the past history is really kind of not been very high on that end of things. Um, so I did a decrease in that, which will help offset some other of the costs. Um, utilities did a slight increase on that. Utilities very slight, um, been staying pretty well in the past, been staying underneath the, the thirty thousand. Thirty some thousand, um, on the most part. I think it's really helped a couple of years ago. Um, for the fact that when they got roof got put on, there was more insulation on that, some of that roof. The drawback is gonna be is, we're gonna have a repair in time in that rough.
Right. Now with the air conditioning.
And air conditioning is gonna increase a little bit of the cost, but hopefully actually with that, with those roof being more insulated than what it is. We'll, we'll keep it relative in perspective yet. I think the two tests of air conditioning will probably come here next week.
That's right.
We have, you know, achievement days, um, the biggest question that was asked. So is the one section is air, the other is not, do we open, keep that door open, because I think they have a fashion show on this, on the south side of Leon. So.
The south side is where I do my judging.
I don't know though, how that's going to work.
I don't know how well that will keep up, the only.
Last year they kept it open part, partway.
Partway.
Partway open and.
That might be, it should help keep the.
We still kept the fans running, so it wasn't, it was tolerable, it was pretty good.
We didn't have air conditioning in there.
No, did not have air conditioning in there last year.
No, but in the.
But in this other one. Probably had the exhaust fans running to keep.
Yeah.
Um. And then the capital building outlay. I have capital building outlay of three hundred and twenty thousand. This is to turn around and put the heaters in there, can, new heaters and air conditioning in the south expo. Um, that. Plus, um, sprinkler system, um, throughout the extension building, which I got it. About a rough estimate and add a little more for cover some costs of two hundred and thirty thousand. And part of this is to get this facility of potential for a hospital. Because the core engineers came in and they said these are some of the factors that are, that are low to have it as a hospital. Um, so these are some of the additions to get this up to if we serve this as a hospital for a, a community hospital. Um so these are some of the additions to get this up to if we serve this as a hospital for a a community hospital for an event.
Like a secondary.
Yes, a secondary for a major um event.
Like with COVID.
Yep. And then also I have also um thirty thousand dollars for electronic signage. Um I had talked to the city park and recreation um about putting electronic signage out there. Um out where they have their sign for their um uh for the ball fields in the in the ice arena. And of course, by this time, the projected of the other building will be done. They had said, yes, we will budget also for fifty percent to go or electronic board out there. Um and then we can be able to go in and digitally put in there what events are going on at the core.
Is that right now where you're putting in the auction information if there's a.
Yes, we can put auction information and events going on. So we had so it can be. Because currently, right now, we go out and put the letters up and sometimes in the winter, it's kind of a little tough. Um I have done it a couple of times. It's really tough when you do it one harm in one hand, but I have I have got it successfully done. Um what's that?
Quick question on the sprinklers, Steve.
Yep.
Look it up. Um so is there a difference in the code requirements for sprinklers if it wasn't going to be used as a as an emergency hospital or is it the same either way?
I think it's the same pretty well ever in any way, but that was one of the things that the core engineers really indicated to have it as it needed to have. Have a sprinkler system. Now, this would not go into the barn itself. This would just be the establishment in the. In the heated area, there would be a cold, what they call a cold area for the the cold storage that's just on the east side. Um would function somehow. I don't know how it's the cold. It's it's it's.
It's cold.
It's cold, but it doesn't have anything in there. But when it does, it needs to shoot it and then um it will run.
So it doesn't freeze.
Yes.
Thanks.
Yep. And then on um four thirty four equipment machinery. Um I there also the core engineers had turned around and the generator is not run is not high enough. They could put backups, but this. I have a two hundred thousand kilowatt generator estimated um at a hundred and eighty thousand. I mean, these generators I did get um from a generator person and and getting everything up to code to what would be sufficient enough to supply that building.
Are there any possibilities of moving some of these generators that we have over there? Are they not?
Well, the problem here is the one that's out here is is a.
The fuel.
That is natural gas. The one that is at the extension building is. No, take take it back. The one out here is field. The one at the extension building is natural gas.
Gotcha. Okay.
And what would probably done with the one that we have now would be is to probably have that brought out to the highway department.
Oh, the one from the extension.
One from the extension if if this thing would all proceed to go out there. It's, I believe, a eighty eighty. Um kilowatt or eight eighty kilowatt, it would not probably run his whole function of the building, but it would get electrical, get his things to function. For him to be able to operate.
Because at the present time, there's.
No, the one from the extension building to.
Because that's natural gas. And right now, currently, there is no generators.
You have natural gas out there.
Is there a generator currently out there or no generators?
There's no generator.
Which with all that said, um I have seven hundred and sixty seven thousand, one hundred and fifteen dollars for the egg building budget.
Is there a need to have a generator out there, Rick?
At times. If you have a portable generator like a first and then has select power grid on it, it's offshore. And for somewhere.
Pull it. Okay. Yeah.
You know, pretty solid, but things like that.
But this would give an opportunity, then they would have. We have one if if it goes.
Right.
They could it could go out to the main shop.
Because we probably wouldn't receive that much in trade and maybe we won't even trade them in. So.
I do know last year the radiator had leaked was a leak in the radiator had to replace the radiator.
All right, moving on to weed.
Yeah, the weed is my still yet my most familiar yet.
Well, I guess somewhat what we've talked. Yeah, we've talked about with um. The sprinkler system or the extension, the hope is too that that will help with insurance costs as well to lower some of that.
Um again, so we had didn't eight percent on that. That's why I had an increase basically going to have because of. Of seasonal and all my weed board members and so they had I. Should be okay for this year on the budget, but um it might be pushing for my salary for this year for Ron coming out of it. So. That gives an increase actually about oh what sixteen thousand from last year. And then of course, insurance of that um was still yet up there yet because when I was in there, I didn't do a lot of decrease in that from the budget item. So. That is kept the same now because of with the employee and so that so. All right, um as far as uh everything else, I did the only other biggest increase since I did was the supply category. Due to the chemical costs and field costs, um that has gone drastically up. I kind of went off of what I've been using for chemical and doing on the current about the current prices right now. Which actually that did an increase so close to oh, what are we saying twenty four thousand um. Chemical, if anybody's been using chemical, it has gone drastically up. It's a shocker.
Right, well.
Big huge shocker.
And then if you can get it, I mean, you kind of need to.
And the big thing is also a supply. They keep on telling us, um if you need something, you better be getting. Getting all of us and getting orders in um because supply is still yet very critical on that. Um down in the bottom, I have for auto for for auto and equipment, I actually um in budgeting for a new Kubota. Um I will, if it approved, I will transfer the old Kubota to the park. Um the old gators out there have quite a few hours on it and it is very functional to be able to utilize another unit to be able to run around the park. Um this here will be able to probably have a little more functions than some of those gators will do. Um so that was at twenty five thousand, which gives my total budget of two hundred and twenty one thousand, four hundred and eighty nine dollars. Which of course is an increase, but I did add more with the wages and then also chemical costs.
What was your capital outlay plan?
What was that?
Capital outlay, put that at twenty.
Twenty five thousand, yep.
That's part of the line four thirty six. What did what? I'm sorry. What did you say that?
Four thirty six, yep. Twenty five thousand for Kubota.
Okay, yeah, just carried over. Okay, now I see. Sorry.
Yep.
All right. Think we made it through, didn't we?
Yeah.
Anybody have any other questions, comments? Do you have anything else, Steve?
No, nothing that I.
Nothing else is on here. So, okay.
All right.
Thank you. Next, we'll move on then to the sheriff and his report and budget.
Sorry, Brad. We've got a lot of things here.
All right, so yeah, that's fine. Item number ten and eleven, then, I guess, is your. Two.
I have a preconstruction meeting. That's why I need to.
Okay, all right. Uh so item number ten then is action to approve a job description for a highway maintenance tech two and three.
I sent these to Natalie to have them updated. Did you get those?
Natalie.
Yeah.
Mm hmm. Yeah, you might as well come up.
Uh, yeah, I think Cindy should have sent them out to you and you should have it in front of you, right?
Yes.
True.
Yep.
Um, yeah, they just needed to be updated to be current. They had been looked at for a little bit. Um no major changes. Actually, from what you see, though, I do have an update um from what you have. Um. Under examining, testing, certification of both of them. Um it just talks about complete um successfully passing a post offer drug and alcohol testing, and we also have and random. Um we have random DOT testing. So that was just something I noticed.
Okay.
I want to approve the updates.
Oh, second.
Johnson, second by Van Duzen. Any other comments or questions? So we're approving both, right? At once. We can do that. All right, Lee, did you have any comments or questions?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Ready to vote? All favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, that motion carries. Okay, so then item number eleven is actually to advertise. Advertise and hire highway maintenance tech two and highway maintenance tech three to fill vacancies.
Yeah, these are, we had people move on and uh we need to fill these positions. Ones for the water grater operator and Henry, and the other one is for the maintenance to hear water.
Move to move that request.
All right, motion by Van Duzen.
Second.
Second by Johnson. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That motion carries. Not hearing Lee.
I said aye.
Okay. All right, then we can back up and go to the sheriffs, right? Is that all that we have? No, we got your first reading to amend ordinance. Okay.
Okay, this is for uh the speed limit change out on Fourth Avenue on the south side of Lake, which the county has. And currently, there's like three different. Uh speed limits right there from our county road seventeen, which goes to the prop. It's forty five, turns to thirty five, then it turns to thirty. Then you get past the park and then it turns to forty five again. So it'll be just changing on each end. Of this section of road, the section in the middle that's thirty will remain thirty miles an hour.
Okay. All right, so I think um I'll just read this because there's no um hearing or public testimony today. It's just the first reading to amend ordinance number eight dash ninety six to lower the speed limit on a section of County Road fourteen. Um actually, I don't know if I'll read the whole ordinance. I guess that's pretty much what that says and. We will be having a public hearing and second reading. Is it next week, Cindy? Or in two weeks?
Uh we have to have ten days from the.
So it'll be two weeks then.
It depends on when I can get it. No, I have to wait and see with your publishing. Yeah, it could be the ninth or the sixteenth, depending on when I can get the publication in South Shore.
Okay. All right, so this is first reading only. And we'll get that on the agenda when the time.
Rick, I would like to thank you for bringing this to us. Uh I know the city folks have been watching us closely, wanting us to drop that and. It doesn't make any sense to have that forty five along there from the park to one thirty nine. I drove that. Uh over the weekend and I couldn't even get up to forty five before I had to stop the stop sign there at one thirty nine. So. Um I think in lieu of the foot traffic and stuff that we anticipate through there, that's a that's a good thing. So thank you very much for getting on that.
Yeah, yeah, both ends are that ways.
Yeah.
Forty five is needless, so.
I had some uh it pertains to highway and the sheriff too, I guess, all uh some uh. Calls this week from some residents in reference to our no Jake break. And uh they wanted us to, this individual that called me would would like us to review or look over where our Jake break signs are at and. And it's amazing how these drivers still use that Jake break in town here a lot and. And uh I mean, you got a semi and then a pop of gravel you're pulling. And you're driving on a thirty five mile an hour speed zone road and you still have to use the Jake brake to stop. I question that at all, but uh. Uh maybe if if some are missing, maybe there's some places where we should be looking at having them, but it's primarily long uh. North Lake Drive and Sycamore Road.
City or city ordinance pertains to that.
A lot of places that, well, there's a lot of gravel coming into town right now, you know, because there's a lot of building going on. And I think the the target area that they were really looking at was, I think there's a lot of gravel going on out at the airport. And that uh I don't know if they're redoing the parking lot out there, whatever it is, but all that gravel that comes into town, comes in on semi. And those boys love to use that Jake break.
Right, that's city ordinance. That's not any jurisdiction of ours. Um we have it going up south on eighty one as far as county, so.
Those signs are posted at all entrances leading into the city. No dynamic break.
You have to redesign to do it. So.
Yeah.
Yeah, so coming down the.
Coming down.
Yep, that's the only one. There never used to be one there, but that was put in uh several years ago. Yeah.
Yep.
Yep, I had some residents that wanted that, but yes, so I guess maybe city officials be on the alert. About all we can do.
Yeah.
Okay.
So noted. Thank you.
Thanks, Rick. Okay, then we can back up to the sheriff's monthly report and budget review.
All right, good morning.
Good morning, Brad and Matt.
Oh, I got a lot of questions for you.
No, I promise I'll keep this quicker than Steve.
We're not worried about quick. We're worried about the numbers.
The numbers, right? All right, we'll start out with the monthly report if you guys want to pass this down to one and. All right, for the monthly report, we'll start with that balance sheet. There you'll see we have two of them now. First one is our regular sheriff's office checkbook there. That one is mine right there. That's right. All right, bank balance, end of June twenty twenty two is five thousand, fifty four dollars and ten cents. You can see we collected eight dollars in copy fees. Four thousand, seven hundred and eighty five dollars and twelve cents in sheriff's fees. And a hundred and fifty dollars in warrant fees for a grand total of four thousand, nine hundred and forty three dollars and twelve cents. And if you put them back together, we're back to our two eighty nine to. Next month, this should be back to our five eighty nine fifty because I closed our other account. When we started all this year, I was going to close one account. So I had two accounts open. That one's closed now and that's been transferred over to this account. So you'll see that on next month's balance sheet there. You go to the next page there, you'll see on our commissary monthly balance sheet. When we started commissary, we opened this account here. See, at the end of June twenty twenty two, twenty four thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars and nine cents. In that account there, uh took in five thousand, five hundred and twenty five dollars and seventy seven cents from the lobby ATM was booking kiosk. Grand total of thirty thousand, seventy five dollars and eighty six cents. If you kind of scroll down here, you see not all this money is county counting. Some of it is actually inmate money that we're holding. So resident balances at the time that we did this was three thousand, nine hundred and fifteen dollars and ninety four cents. Commissary items was taxed, five thousand, two hundred and forty two dollars and thirty three cents. That's how much was spent there and fund balance of twenty thousand, nine seventeen fifty nine. Per grand total of thirty thousand, seventy five, eighty six. So if you balance all that out, leads us back to our fifteen thousand that we started with initially at fifteen thousand. So. And if there's a little blurb on the bottom there, um the commission that the county made there was one thousand, eight hundred and thirty five dollars and sixty three cents for the month of June. When we were doing commissary, so a little bit of income coming in for their for the county. You jump to the next page there, you'll see uh sheriff's office activity. We responded to five hundred and seventy three cases and calls for service in the month of June. Nine accident reports were done, ninety six warrants were served, two hundred and thirty five civil papers were served. And three thousand, three hundred and fifty three transport miles were done for the month of June. You scroll down to the middle of the page there. You scroll down to the middle of the page there, you'll see our average daily population sixty-four point four-three for the month of June. We have seventy-three, we're average high average daily population of high seventy-three, low ADP was fifty-seven. Uh, talking about the twenty-four seven program now on the scram bracelet, it's seventeen people on the scram on remote press. We had five people, twenty-nine people on the twice daily PBT. And we had thirty-six people on the twice weekly UAs. One on the sweat patch for a grand total of eighty-eight people on the twenty-four seven program. And we had two hundred and fourteen bookings in the jail air, so. Scroll down to the bottom of the page there, you'll see out of county contracts, we collected nine thousand twenty dollars and six cents for out of county contracts. Work release, we collected six thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars. Twenty-four seven fees, we collected five thousand two hundred and three dollars and scram fees were collected were four thousand and fifty-two dollars. Any questions on that? All right, one quick thing I want to kind of throw out there, National Night Out is next week, August fourth. From five thirty to seven thirty, we're doing it in conjunction with Thursday Night Live, switching it up a little bit this year. So five thirty to seven thirty uptown here. Seven o'clock, we're doing a ball drop for school supply giveaway. Come for fun, food prizes, and come to see the law enforcement and highway patrol, game pitch park, police department, sheriff's office, fire department. And there'll be some also some vendors there to um, show off their stuff, so come on down for some fun next Thursday night, August fourth.
Very good. Thank you. So we're ready to move on to your budgets then?
Ready to move on to the budget there. We'll start with the sheriff's office budget. All right, everybody's got that pulled up there. If you start with four eleven wages, that whole column there, we budgeted for eight percent pull up for same thing as Steve. For the CPIU here. We included step increases, overtime and part timers, transport, shift pay, call pay, holidays, snow days, et cetera. Three percent to eight percent, it's around fifty-five thousand dollars difference, include that in there. Line four fifteen, health insurance, a budget of fifteen percent increase. Line four twenty-five, repairs and maintenance was an increase of fifty-five hundred dollars. That's for Zerker fees and for scheduling software that we're using right now. Zerker has a set increase that they go up every year. Forty-four twenty-six point one gasoline, this is a big hit right here. Increase of twenty-eight thousand dollars for gasoline. It's one of those things, it's kind of a shot in the dark. I'm hoping that's enough. It's hard to plan for with the rates kind of going up and down, kind of like they have been. So it is a twenty-eight thousand dollar increase for gasoline. Four twenty-nine, increase of a thousand dollars for postage because everything's going up a little bit. I haven't increased that for a long time. Four thirty-four machinery and equipment was an increase of fifty-four thousand nine hundred dollars. That's three patrol cars for next year and equipment, uh, two office computers. Looking to do a contract with Axon body cameras, car cameras and tasers. That's a conjunction with sheriff's budget, my jail budget, and also state's attorney's office. State's attorney actually came to me and said that it would be a great benefit to her office as well. So that's something that we, she said that she'd be willing to look at, save her a lot of time if we had this as well. So we kind of split that, small twenty-five thousand dollars per budget that we split up between the three budgets here. So virtual seventy-five thousand. Four thirty-five, minor equipment furniture, increase of six thousand dollars for upgrading the front window of the sheriff's office to make it more secure, make the office staff a little more safe. Something that we're kind of looking at, that's just a rough number that we were able to come up with there, so. Any quick questions on the sheriff's budget?
Just a comment on those body cameras, um, just uh, with the state's attorney's office, you know, and their caseload, that is a uh, a help to them. It's not, not just the law enforcement, but also the prosecutor. So that has to do with packaging up the evidence and all that for different cases.
Yep, like I say, the state's attorney actually came to me and was really hoping that we be able to budget for that for next year because it takes a load off her office as well as also our office, so. No questions on that. I will jump to the jail budget here. I also brought Matt with to kind of work along with me on this one, since we worked together on this one. So if you look at line four eleven, uh, did the same thing, eight percent cost of living, CPIU there. We also did wage increases. The annual step increases are also in there, overtime, part-time, shift differential. We're looking at adding, right now, we currently have one part timer that is getting full-time benefits just because of the amount of hours that that part timer is working. So we are budgeted for that person to be full-time and we also budgeted for another full-time to help with annual leave and time off and covering with all the holidays and covering with everything that we have going, so essentially keeping the one that we're paying full-time benefits for, giving her full-time hours and adding another full-time person. Line four fifteen, health insurance, we budgeted fifteen percent. Line four fifteen point two, did a three percent increase for dental insurance. Line four twenty-one, we increased three thousand dollars.
Jail insurance.
Jail insurance, okay, went up three thousand dollars, looks like we went up a little bit. Four twenty-two, we increased ten thousand dollars, that's men care. They have a increase that was built into their contract for two percent. I think that's the end of their contract coming up this year, so it'll be renegotiated, I'm sure. Hospital bills, clinic, dental, et cetera, in that one. Line four twenty-two point three, decreased one thousand, which one was that one? Ambulance, ambulance, okay, decreased that a thousand dollars. Four twenty-five, we increased eleven thousand dollars, it was fixing, repairing, uh, replacing broken items, costs is going up, supplies. That's jail side of the Zerker maintenance fees are also going up a little bit, so.
Brad, I have a question. You know, I'm being able to reduce that ambulance, is that in relation to the fact of having that staff in-house with the nurse and that?
Yeah, it's kind of a crapshoot whether, you know, it's a guess, but um, with the nurse being there, it's really helped. Um, she can triage a lot of that stuff during the day and take care of that and reduce that.
Yeah, it is just kind of a guess sometimes, depending on when they come in and after having a reaction, we have to send them or something, so.
Right.
Just kind of looking at the past years, we haven't used as much, so we kind of dropping it down a little bit. This year may be high.
Right.
That is a, that is definitely help having men care. Four twenty-six, uh, that one is supplies. We raised supplies, twenty-six thousand one hundred and thirty-two dollars. Our food contract is going up, they said about ten percent because of the consumer prices and all that stuff are going up, so. So we increased that to covered food, meals, uh, four twenty-six point three, reduced forty-eight thousand dollars. Getting rid of phone cards and having this new system that we got in place here, they can buy online and kind of doesn't have to spend all that money for phone cards upfront there. Still have a little bit of video visit maintenance here that we are hoping to be done with in July of next year and do go to this new company. So that should be young by then too, so. Line four twenty-nine point one, we reduced four thousand.
The GPS monitoring, we, that's for like workers, the GPS monitoring, we, we're low on our budget, we're low compared to where we should be, so we reduced that to get mine.
Line four thirty-three, garage doors and openers. Toilets, showers, garage doors. Four thirty-three, um, Bud must have stayed the same.
Yep, stood the same.
But that's what's going in that line item there. Line four thirty-four, uh, increase of forty-three thousand, like say this is the body cameras that we were just talking about in the sheriff's budget there. Tasers, et cetera, phase three of the door lock system. Buying a couple new office computers, keeping them on rotation, new restraint chair, camera maintenance, uh, paying for managed services, et cetera.
We currently don't have body cameras in the jail.
Yeah, I was going to ask you about that, so how does that tie in with the jail budget? The body cameras?
The body cams, like say, we're going to take twenty-five thousand dollars, they're budgeting for a third of it for their cameras and et cetera as well, so.
Okay.
So then we would all have.
And they have huge reliability.
You have body cameras in the jail?
We will, yeah, if we get approved, yeah. I think that'd be beneficial.
Especially with he said, she said, and all the things that have been happening and the fights and assaults and.
And that's the joint effort between sheriffs.
Three-way partnership between your budget, your budget and the state's attorney.
All county dollars, but between three different departments, so.
Yeah, can I chime in on that one, though? You just, I mean, that ties into a software system so that you, you know, so you can store and access the videos. So it's kind of good to have everything on one system, so that's part, that's a big part of this too.
Yeah, like right now, we have in-house storage for all our body camera and our in-car camera. And there's an expense to keeping that, but you know, that's kind of built in right now, so.
Evidence dot com.
Evidence dot com, everyone knows all about it from the, police department has it, and it's a great tool.
Yeah, it is, and it actually allows the state's attorney to log in and review the videos without having to send copies over to her office.
Yeah.
And wait for those, and so it's a good, good system.
So that's the end of the jail budget there. We're going to jump down to the twenty-four seven budget if you don't have any other questions on the jail budget right now. Twenty-four seven budget, um, wage and salary calculated, there's a formula that we use. Maybe Matt wants to explain a little bit more, each month he has a formula that he uses for how much time we're using on twenty-four seven, et cetera, et cetera, so. That's all kind of budgeted, calculated into the wages there.
Sheriff's. Next.
And they see built in with their step increases and overtime, et cetera. Might, you guys find it?
Yeah, I know.
Okay. And then line four twenty-four, save budget eighteen thousand for the kiosk again. And it's a self-staining program where fees collected from the program. Cindy was saying that our funds are getting a little bit low because if you look at our participant numbers over the last year, year and a half, they've been down a little bit, so our funds are a little bit lower. But it's still a program that I think is beneficial to the county, like say it's not going to.
It's possible, it's going to need a cash operating transfer from the general fund to twenty-four seven just because costs are increasing and the revenue's not keeping up with the expenditures where it was before. And part of it's due to I, COVID, I don't know if, our, our revenue is definitely down, I don't know why.
I don't know, I think it kind of started with COVID, we didn't have as many people in the program, it was kind of suspended there for a while.
Yes.
Now we have a new judge, um, seems like the number of people that are on there have been quite the same, so I don't know if it's different policies in the courts. That's something that we were just kind of asking our twenty-four seven coordinators what they thought as well, so. Like see, when you look at wages there, that's two, uh, that's pretty much one staff, so. So hopefully it levels off and they will maintain, but may have to take a little out of the general fund like Cindy was saying, so.
It's a good program for the individuals, I mean, it's better that they're out working, so.
There are youth at risk here, five thousand dollars, it's the same as it's been for a long time here. Sometimes we go a little over, sometimes we haven't, so. That's if we transported juvenile out of town here, three hundred and sixty dollars.
Three thirty-one.
Three thirty-one, forever, so. So that's still at five thousand dollars with youth at risk, if you guys got that one.
So do you take them down to Sioux Falls typically then?
Typically, we don't have to, um, occasionally we do.
Yeah.
If we have to, if it's ordered by court or something, we'll run them to Sioux Falls and back and forth for court to uh, do that. But our goal is to not do that, to save three hundred and fifty bucks a day.
Right.
And transport. All right, thank you. Any questions there? All right. That all I have.
I think so, as far as I can see, should be good. All right, thank you, guys. Okay, let's move on then to item number eight, action to approve job description, auditor's administrative assistant position. So you have that in your packets, Cindy, did you want to say anything was, or Natalie's going to take care of that?
Um, yes, so we have an opening in the auditor's office um, due to someone giving notice. And so we want to just get this um, job description approved. It's basically the same thing again, just trying to get some updates and things um, for the title correct since the wage study has been done, the title hadn't officially been changed over. And some things that were in the job description that is just no longer being done till the end, so, yeah.
Move to approve.
Motion by Van Duzen.
Second.
Second by Johnson. Any comments or questions? Not hearing any. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. All right, item number nine then, action to advertise and hire an auditor administrative assistant to fill a vacancy.
Move to approve.
Motion by Van Duzen, second by Waterman. Any comments or questions on that? Not hearing any, all favor say aye.
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 Opposed? That motion carries.
Thank you.
All right.
Personnel policy is next, Natalie.
All right, hello again. Two items for you today for um, updates to the personnel policy that have come up. The first one is part-time employees regarding step increases. So Lee, I know you're wondering where this was, it's appendix A and compensation. You keep scrolling.
Yeah, I saw it, I saw it in there before, so I just, I was looking, you're guiding me appropriately.
Okay. Yep, as you're scrolling, yeah, it's towards the end. So what we have in there currently, um, the language, the first part of that is the language that's current there, Lee's got it up on the screen. And then the red is the new language that would be added. So the compensation for step increases changed with the wage study um, two years ago, whatever, year and a half ago. And so it was at that time changed to nine hundred hours to qualify for a step, and it would reset every year. There was some concerns brought forward about employees that wouldn't qualify every year and could be here for a significant amount of time then and not receive a step increase. So to address that concern and that need, we've added this additional language in that you can see there. So basically, it just says, um, however, in addition, however, part-time employees who have not received a step increase for two or more years may be eligible in July of the third year if they have accumulated twelve hundred or more hours over the prior twelve-year, two-year period, excuse me. So they would go no more than two years without getting a step, even if they did not meet the nine hundred hour requirement.
So it accumulate them, basically.
Yes.
So yeah, basically, we had employees that were, you know, good employees that that were tired, they just weren't quite making that threshold continuously. This, this gives them that opportunity, just looking at it, taking, you know, widening the window a bit.
Yeah, and it's still, there still could be employees that are very part-time that still wouldn't qualify. So this, yeah, it doesn't address everyone, but tries to address some of that.
I think we hashed this over pretty well last week, didn't we?
Yeah. So. Striking the proper balance.
There's another item that you could take with it, one motion to update.
Both.
Yeah, yeah, to remove the language regarding the mid-month pay advance because we no longer are doing that, so if you want.
I'll make that motion today.
Johnson, second by Gable. Any more comments or questions?
The one, that second one is it is actually, um, we're just IRS.
We're complying with the IRS. We were, we were doing a mid-month payroll draw and we were paying employees out a net of half their salary, and then we weren't paying the income tax or the withholding till we did payroll at the end of the month, and IRS says that is not acceptable. We have to pay that withholding, and the way our system works, it would not work, so. Once a month salary is what we want to.
Yeah, so the employees are prepared for that.
Oh, it's already been in fact, it's already been in fact, we just forgot to take it out of the policy, so.
Yeah.
They have had over a year to.
Fall behind.
Switch over.
To budget.
Oh, budget.
All right. All favor say aye.
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 Opposed? That motion carries. All right, we don't have, thank you Natalie. Number fourteen, we won't worry about that, review of twenty twenty-three budget requests, you want to do nonprofits or?
Uh, let's do those next week because I think we're almost to the end of the longer ones, so.
Yep.
All right, item number sixteen, action to approve claims for payment.
Yeah, we have two types of claims today. The first one are the miscellaneous expenditures that we have with our credit card companies. First one is the director of equalization office. companies. Um, first one is the director of equalization office, seventy dollars and fifty cents to First Interstate Bank Mastercard for fuel supplies. The second one is the county park and the weed department, First Interstate Bank. Mastercard, one hundred and nine dollars and ninety-nine cents for LTD broadband. The next one is also the same credit card company, First Interstate Bank, and it is for supplies of fuel and Adobe software program for the highway department. Total is two hundred and thirty-one dollars and fifty-seven cents. The emergency management purchased supplies using their First Interstate Bank Mastercard in the amount of one hundred and two dollars and ninety-six cents. The auditor's office, um, purchased supplies and had fuel costs, and the total is one thousand sixty-nine dollars and twelve cents. Part of that was election costs for four hundred and ninety-five dollars and, um, another part, half of that went to the auditor's office of four ninety-five, half to the election for four ninety-five. And then the treasures office had fuel charges for attending a conference for seventy-nine twelve. Another visa, uh, from the sheriff's office, hundred and twenty-five dollars for postage for coroner, for postage and gloves, visa, two hundred and eighty-four dollars and thirty-seven cents. And then for the welfare office, seven hundred and thirty-one dollars and ninety-six cents for, uh, supplies and miscellaneous costs for their move. Final one is emergency management, seventy-two dollars and forty-one cents for miscellaneous supplies.
Look for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Motion by Van Duzen, second by Johnson. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That motion carries. Item number seventeen, uh, automatic budget supplements.
No, oh, sorry, we have one more salary. We have salary claims.
Okay.
Claims also, sorry.
All right.
Uh, salary claims for the month of July were six hundred and thirty-two thousand, one hundred and forty-six dollars and eighty-nine cents.
All right.
Still seconded.
Oh, we need new motion for this.
Well, I'll make the motion. I'll make the motion.
Okay, motion by Van Duzen, second by Johnson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And this does reflect all of the step increases that it took effect July first. And then next in August, I will, or next meeting, I will be bringing you action to do the ARPA operating cash transfer for those salaries.
Any opposed? That motion carries. All right. Um, automatic budget supplements. You said we don't have any of those, um, approved personnel changes. We have a few of those.
We have, um, a new hired deputy state's attorney, Danielle Rayne. Effective date, August first, at one, six thousand one hundred and nineteen dollars and fifty-eight cents per month. And then we had another employee who, um, got his step increase, and we didn't get the paperwork till just now, Jeff Argo at the highway department. His step increase was step eight, twenty-three, twenty-eight per hour.
Motion by Gable. I'll second the motion. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. All right, item number nineteen, action to prove travel requests.
Several of those, sheriff's office, one staff, um, one employee traveling to Pierre for NCIC full access training. And then the welfare office for the welfare director and the welfare assistant to attend training for medical claims half a day with the many hot, hot human services in Sioux Falls.
By Johnson, second by Gable. Any comments, questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries. All right, um, item number twenty, public notices, possible form of commissioners. We have two down there, Sioux Valley Commissioner's Association meeting Wednesday, August tenth in Madison, and the SDA CO and SDACC Annual Convention, September twelfth and thirteenth in Pierre.
I do need to know who's going to attend that meeting in Madison on the tenth. I hope we, Myron is the only commissioner who has responded.
I am going to.
I will not be.
I will not be.
I won't be.
All right.
Also, uh, as noted, uh, four H achievement days start, uh, August one. And so I, I know I'll be out there. So there may be others during that particular time that the barbecue, four H barbecue is the third. We'll be meeting on second before then, but
What is the beginning date and end date for the achievement days? I'll just list it that way.
Uh, it'll be August first, and I think it goes through the third.
Okay.
Yep, the barbecue is on the third.
Okay.
All right. The other hospital notices, form of commissioner. See anything else other than that barbecue?
Just for the more information that this afternoon, we'll begin interviewing for the, uh, position to fill the job in the county health nurse department.
All right.
Well, today is Thursday.
I guess I'll mention this. This isn't until, um, August fifth. The senior companions are wondering if one of us would once again like to appear and, uh, represent the commission. I have in the past, I would do it again unless somebody else wants to do it. It's Friday, August fifth at ten thirty. So
You gotta
Have another week, I guess, to think on that, because it is August fifth. All right, any old business? Any new business? Anything for the open? Do we have a need for executive session? Look for a motion to adjourn.
Salute.
Motion by Johnson.
Second.
Second by Van Duzen.
Sorry, Lee.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? We are adjourned.